Patience again. So, call the order. Item number one, all aldermen are present. Still waiting to fill District Three's seat. Item two, or item three, pledge of allegiance and silent prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand.
My dear justice to the flag, on the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undrawn and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four, reading of the minutes of the previous meetings held on April 11th and April 16th, 2024. See attachments I, number one and number two. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I got a motion by Veneman. Oh, and I have a second by Delaney. Any questions, comments? 604. That's okay. Thank you. All right, seeing no questions or comments, I move to vote. All those in favor. Sorry, go ahead and vote. Eyes have it, seven to zero. Item five, consider the appointment of District Three alderperson to replace Matt Zachar to serve for the balance of the term ending April 14th, 2025. See attachment three. We are looking at Will Haskell, Justin Plouis, Rick Wellnitz, and Helen Streakstra. At this time, I'm looking for any nominations. Oh, I'm going to get used to the board yet. Give me some time. Patrick.
I'd like to nominate Will Haskell, Justin Plouis, Helen Streakstra, and Ri- Rick Wellnitz.
He just nominated all four.
You didn't have, is it sec- we need a second one. Oh, oh, okay.
At this point, I'm closing nominations, since all four have been nominated. So Ryan.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate a point I made previously. I do not feel it's appropriate for council to appoint this District Three alderperson at this time. I think we've seen a number of great candidates that have thrown their hat into the ring and very much appreciated. But I see this appointment as a potential advantage to the upcoming District Three election. And I think its history has shown that incumbents are pretty successful typically. So I think this should be the decision of District Three residents. I would be in favor of a special election at the earliest opportunity available. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. All four now, all four personnel being nominated at this point. Jake.
I would like to give the opportunity to those nominated to give their three minutes on why they would like to represent District Three for those of District Three and the public watching to get to know their potential candidates a little more and for ourselves.
All right. Anyone like to come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself? Please state your name and address, please. Make sure the yellow light is on the mic.
Okay. I'm Justin Plouis, and I reside at 530 Third Street South. In front of you, you have a red folder with my resume, my letter of interest, and some, three pages of signatures. I know the signatures weren't required, but I felt it was important to get out into the district, make myself available and known to the residents of District Three. And it was really a great experience, get to see some old friends, some old neighbors, and meet some new friends. So, my letter of interest talks about different reasons why I would want to be part of the council, but I want to emphasize the reason, most important reason to me. Wisconsin Rapids may not be my hometown, I wasn't born in Wisconsin Rapids, but my 12-year-old and my 14-year-old were born here, and this is their hometown. I want them to be very proud of the city of Wisconsin Rapids. I want them, when they finish high school, whatever they do if, whether college or whatever they do after high school, I want them to be able to move back to Wisconsin Rapids. And Wisconsin Rapids be a great place for them to raise a family. Because back in 2004, when I moved here for employment, my wife and I decided to stay in Wisconsin Rapids because it was a great place to raise a family, to live, to reside, to community events. For nearly 10 years, I've also done real estate. I've worked for a real estate brokerage and helped many people look for housing that were initially looking for housing in the Plover-Stevens Point area and found it unattainable because of cost and the competitiveness. And when they were suggested to look here in Wisconsin Rapids, they found Wisconsin Rapids to be just as great place to relocate to and raise a family here as well. So I think, I'd like to be part of the council to try to improve that for the city of Wisconsin Rapids, to make this and continue to make this a great place to live. A good question was posed to me when I was, expressed my interest was, you worked for the city for 20 years, and would you be, would you be able to be non-biased when it comes to decisions, particularly to the fire department? I would use those 20 years of experience working for the city of Wisconsin Rapids to make good decisions. But ultimately, if I'm so lucky to be put into the position of District Three alderperson, I'd be making decisions based on whatever is the best interest of the people of District Three. And I would use that guiding principle in making decisions. And as long as I'm making, using that as a guiding principle for making decisions for the District Three residents, I don't feel I would be biased. So, and lastly, I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I appreciate the, the seat. I'd much, would like to see it to be an election as well, so the District Three residents could, could, their voices could be heard, but at the same time, I'm also very appreciative as a District Three resident that the seat is going to be filled, so they will have representation here at the council. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to come forward?
Did you leave it on? Good evening. My name is Will Haskell. While I haven't been here quite as long as Mr. Plouis, I moved here in 2007. I have been active in the community. Some of you know me. Some of them, some of you have not seen me before, and that's fine, because Wisconsin Rapids is big enough. I am originally from California. I moved here because of a Wisconsin Rapids resident. We were working together, and we have continued that. I live at 341 Oak Street, where a lot of people don't even believe there is a house, but it's perfect for us, because we are both disabled. That does not mean that we are not capable of doing things. However, what it does mean is that certain people believe that we are capable of only a certain number of things. If you've looked at my resume and my letter of interest, you understand that I do not let my disability stop me. I do not only focus on people with disabilities. I am a person who believes in the strength of community. And I strongly believe that Wisconsin Rapids has a strong community. And I did run with respect against Mayor Zachar when he was alderperson, and I did get 39% of the vote. And I don't think that's too shabby for somebody who was walking around at something like minus 20 degrees in December, because I didn't, I would rather do that than bother somebody to drive me around. Because when you are somebody who works, when you do something in the public sector, you do what you need to do. I did it. I did eventually get some help from a friend of mine, and we drove around, and I appreciate that, too. We together are stronger. But I wanted to tell you a quick story. April 17th to 2024 may not mean anything to you. Those of you who have last month's minutes understand it might be, it was the day after the last city council meeting. That was the day my father died. He died because he did not take care of himself. I hate to say it that way. But a city is just like a person. If you do not take care of the residents of that city, it will die slowly, painfully. I've seen it. I've lived in many cities in three different states. I've also seen cities come back from the, from the brink. I live in downtown Wisconsin Rapids. I like this place. I am not going anywhere. And even if I am not appointed to this seat, you will see me again. I'm not going anywhere. I am in the community every week, if not every day, on foot, on bike. I talk to people, I meet people. I know what they want. Even if I don't always agree with them, I work with people. And I hope that we build this city with people, with each other. And that was not what I practiced, but that's what I said there. There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up and tell us about yourself?
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity, guys. I've been here since 1970. Married my husband, and 47 years later, he just passed in June of '22. During that time, we owned several businesses, including landlord-ing, maintenance, civil process serving. So we've seen the public in many phases and many ages. I love our neighborhood, I love our city. I think we, if we raise one up, we can raise all of us up. And that's what we try to do in the housing industry. And we are no longer in it, I am no longer in it, but I'm still actively involved with our landlord association. In that being said, I do treasure the time that I have been here, as well as I think that all of you are very dedicated and do this because you truly, truly love the city and want to make it better, as I would. And I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Unless you have another plan, anyone, just feel free to speak up. Otherwise, we can go ahead and just take a roll call vote. And if everybody gets votes, then we would go with the highest two, and then take another vote to, and then at that vote, we should come to the final one. Dean.
Thank you, candidates, for speaking up. I did want to point out, and while though it's not anything, and I appreciate Helen, you mentioning on here that you would be out of town in, in Ireland for a week during budget month. I know that's not, it's not critical to be gone here during budget month, but I did want to point that out. And possibly if there was access to Zoom or something, have you got the candidate? That may be something we want to consider, just in, because it is, as most of the people around this table know, we spent quite a bit of time here in October, so. I just wanted to make sure that was, that people noticed that on your resume. Thank you.
Um, so I appreciate all of the candidates who submitted a letter of interest, and want to acknowledge that everyone who did reach out, whether they retracted before this moment or came up to speak or not, you all clearly have a desire to make this community better, and I appreciate you going out of your way to do this. I did receive four phone calls from business owners in District Three, three phone calls from residents of District Three, and two phone calls from others outside of District Three who had fantastic things to say about Justin Plouis. So I wanted to put that on the record, that I received those calls. I'm not sure if those people also reached out to the other alderperson. I did recommend that, but don't always know if there's follow-through, so.
Thank you.
Um, I have this slip, so that's okay. Yeah, you can, actually. Okay, District One abstains. District Two votes for Helen Streakstra. District Three. Oh, obviously, there is no District Three. District Four votes for Helen Streakstra. District Five, Justin Plouis. District Six, Justin Plouis. And District Seven, Helen Streakstra. And District Eight, Justin Plouis. We have our, we have a tie. And so, the, there was a tie between, there were three for Justin Plouis and three for Helen Streakstra, and William Haskell and Rick Wellnitz did not get votes. So the top two, then, are Helen Streakstra and Justin Plouis. So what are your wishes? Okay. All right.
Maddie.
So there's no procedure written into our ordinance for how this is done. But standard practice is that we have the mayor break a tie vote when that happens at the council? Why wouldn't that rule apply here as well?
I guess I'm, I know it would, I know he would break the vote on a.
Not on a council.
On a, other appointments. Let me, uh.
But we don't have a rule that says anything about what we do with this appointment?
No, the council decides how they wish to do it.
I mean, I think the whole idea would not.
Right. I thought you were going to vote for, everyone was on the table, and then you would have another vote on the top two. It wasn't necessarily that you would have a winner, like, that he would then need to break a tie, because there wasn't going to be a, a final vote. You were doing the first vote to get to the top two, and now you're going to vote on the top two.
I would say, let's vote on the, take the vote again, and see what happens. Jake.
In the, in the, I just have a, and I think Sue's looking it up, but being that the mayor is a part of the council, I don't know the exact rules, but my assumption would be that they vote a tie, but I guess we'll vote again, and then.
Well, but I, then maybe I misunderstood, that I thought you were going to vote to get to the top two, and it, so you were never going to cha- you were never going to choose someone on the, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I, I'm.
I thought you said, I don't know why we're.
No, no, no.
So we are taking the second round of voting. Now it's for either Justin Plouis or Helen Streakstra.
Okay, District One abstains. District Two for Helen. District Four for Helen. District Five for Justin. District, District Six for Justin. District Seven for Helen. And District Eight for Just, Justin. So we have three for Justin, three for Helen, and one abstention.
I can't request this brief, because my thing's down. Um, thank you. Um, I think that as a council, we should, I think, I'll make a motion to have the mayor break the tie. Because it's up, it, there is no precedent, so it's up to the council to decide that. So I'm going to make a motion to revote. Pardon?
I don't know what. Well, so you're saying.
I'll make a motion that we revote, and in the event of the tie, mayor breaks the tie. Does that need to be a motion? Yep, I'm down.
Okay, so we have a motion by Veneman.
Oh, sorry.
Jake, did you want to speak? Dean, are you done speaking?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can research this, but the, the mayor is part of the council. The only standing rule is that he only votes in the case of a tie, which this is it. So there would have to be some niche rule written somewhere that he doesn't vote in this particular setting. So I, I guess we can vote to have him vote, but I don't think that's necessary, as any other item on this agenda or future agendas, he would break a tie. So I don't, I don't know if the motion's necessary.
Yeah, I'm not sure. That's why I made the motion. I agree with you, I didn't, that's why I made the motion, because I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Going to do.
Do we have a second? I have a motion by Veneman, second by Catno. Any other questions or comments?
Are we going to vote again? Was that the motion, or is?
Yeah, the motion is to vote again, and in the event of a tie, then the mayor breaks the tie.
Well, we could sit here all day voting, but go ahead.
Or you could break the tie now, but I guess make the motion first.
All right, so the motion's on the table with a second, voting. Go ahead and vote.
This is, this is the motion to have you break the tie. So you could decide whether you're going to break.
The tie or not. But you're not going to break the tie until after you vote on whether or not you're going to break the tie.
Yes, Maddie.
I can't, I don't have a speaking button. But I, I voted nay, because I think that if we vote again, we're still going to tie, and that would be silly. So that was my reasoning for voting nay, just so that we could have you break the tie, and not have to revoke.
Okay, so the tie that he just broke was to allow him to break the tie. So now, right.
Well, it's, yeah.
Did it just pass, though?
Yeah.
Okay, so it passed, so we're revoting, and then I'm breaking the tie.
Okay, so hold on.
If there's a tie. So if you guys want to break the tie, feel free.
Hold on, I got to get this recorded here. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can't find that.
Hold on. Okay, so.
Why are, why are we voting again? I don't understand that.
I think we're only voting, yeah, just because the motion was made as such. So we could do it real quick.
Yeah.
Get the vote done.
Yep.
Raise your hands?
Yeah.
Okay, we're taking a new vote. All those to nominate Justin Plouis, raise your hands. I have three. You need the names?
No, thanks.
Thank you. All those in favor of Helen Streakstra, raise your hand. We have three. So we have a tie.
Okay, now I need the third person, there was somebody over here.
Patrick Delaney.
Patrick. Okay, we have a tie.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything before we move forward?
Uh, nope, you're going to break the tie.
All right. I appreciate everything that both of you do for our community. Thank you very much for everything you do. I'm going to nominate Justin Plouis.
Okay. There we go. Okay. So.
Item number six, we're going to do the oath of office for, for Justin Pluse.
Justin, you can come right up here. I'll be there in just a second. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Justin Pluse.
Aye, Justin Pluse.
Having been duly appointed...
Have been duly appointed.
To serve as District Three Alderperson...
To serve as District Three Alderperson.
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids...
For the city of Wisconsin Rapids.
Do hereby solemnly swear...
Do, uh, here solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States...
Of the United States.
And of the state of Wisconsin...
And the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge...
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of said office...
The duties of said office.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Alright.
Item seven, consider... Okay.
Congratulations.
Yeah, he is. Give him, give him just a second, Matt. Thank you. Thank you.
It's all uphill from here.
We all set?
File.
Alright. But I can continue. That's fine. Item seven, consider the appointment of a resident to serve on the Water Works and Lighting Commission to replace Jeff Penscover for a term expiring October 1st, 2027. See attachment four. People that have put in are Kevin Fangman, Mike Derry, and Nick Palmquist. What are your wishes?
Anyone here to speak or... Does anybody would, sorry, would anybody like, um, would like to be recognized to speak, any of those candidates?
At this time, does anyone who wishes to fill this seat like to come up and tell us a little about you, yourself?
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the council for this time to, to hear. I'll keep this brief. Let me introduce myself. I'm Mike Derry. I'm a longtime resident of Wisconsin Rapids. I, I've lived here since 1973, so I worked in the Port Edwards and the Cusa paper mills for 43 years, having attained a senior journeymanship in heavy equipment, as a qu, heavy equipment mechanic. At that time, I was a shop leader. I organized a crew of, of craftsmen. I planned jobs, I ordered parts, over, I oversaw the status of the work as well as working with numerous vendors. I believe I can bring these skills to help benefit our city, and I want to thank you all for considering me for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to introduce yourself?
Good evening. My name's Kevin Fangman. I am not originally from your city. Grew up in Iowa, transferred to Illinois for college, lived there for 40 years, the last six years of which I owned a vacation property on the north end of Lake Winnebago in Manassas. My wife and I recently moved here. We chose this location not simply because of a house that we found that we liked. We were very interested in finding a city that matched our needs and what we thought was good. The issues that face the city are numerous, though, and in the short time I've seen, I've had interactions with several of you in person, email, phone calls. I've been involved with a lot of your contractors, and they all seem to express the same types of concerns. My background is actually in information technology, however. That included in one of my later positions where I developed these massive lights-out warehouses, managing budgets of tens of millions of dollars, overseeing the work specifically and directly of 22 people, overseeing the work as a secondary for over 200. My experience in, in management, in budgeting, in construction is extensive. The only reason I'm here is I've been asked, and I feel like I can help. And that's all I want to do, is I want to help this city be all that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Nick Palmquist. Put in for the Water Works and Lighting Commission because I figured I could bring something to the table. Been an electrician for the last 15 years. Did a lot of residential, commercial, and industrial. Five of those years I spent at the paper mill. We did work at water quality, so I do kind of have some of the wastewater treatment. Now I don't know how to run the equipment, but we were tasked to maintain the equipment. Currently, I'm a foreman at Econ Electric, you know, plan out work, order materials, things like that. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. What are your wishes, council? Jake?
I'll nominate Mike Derry, Nick Palmquist, and Kevin Fangman for the open position on the Water and Light Commission.
All people running have been nominated, so I'm closing the nomination process. Please put the person you're voting for in the paper, pass it forward, and we'll do the same thing. Whoever has the most votes, the two top ones, the second time, will revote for those two at the top.
Okay, District One is a vote for Kevin. District Two is a vote for Kevin. District Three is a vote for Nicholas. District Four is a vote for Mike. District Five is a vote for Nicholas. District Six is a vote for Mike. District Seven is a vote for Kevin. And District Eight abstains.
I didn't get that, did you? Okay. One and two are Kevin. Stains.
Okay, so I have three votes for Kevin, two for Mike, three for Nicholas, and one abstention.
Is that what you had?
Okay. I guess not.
So at this point, Mr. Fangman won with a vote of three. There's no reason to vote a second time?
Okay, wait a second.
Okay, well, there is no top two.
So...
One second.
So Kevin has three and the other two have two. So do you want to vote again? Do you want to...
How would you like to proceed, in all seriousness?
I think the plan was to go to two, so either way, I think we should still narrow it down to two because that's what we were told in the beginning that we're gonna go to two.
So we'll vote again?
Well, yeah, now we're down to, I don't know how you get to two because there's a tie on the second one.
I understand. So I kind of spoke too early on this one.
My...
Go ahead, Jake.
My device isn't working, but I'll make a motion to vote for a commission member for Water and Light Commission. Whoever receives the most votes is appointed to that position. Well, then you break it, right?
I have a motion by Catno, second by Delaney, to, can you state your motion again, please?
Motion to vote to elect a person to the Water Works and Lighting Commission. Whoever receives the most votes is appointed to the position.
Alright, we'll pass around the papers.
We have to vote on that.
Cast your vote, please.
Okay, oh, okay. Here.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, District One, Kevin. District Two for Kevin. District Three for Nicholas. District Four for Mike. District Five, Nicholas. District Six for Mike. District Seven, Kevin. And District Eight abstains. So the votes are three for Kevin, two for Mike, two for Nicholas.
Congratulations, Kevin. Thank you, everybody, for putting in the time and effort to be here today. Item eight, election of an elder person to serve on the board of the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce. Ryan?
I'll nominate Dean Veneman.
Dean Veneman has been not, so right now I've opened up the floor for nominations. Dean Veneman has been nominated by Ryan Austin. Any, Dean, do you accept?
Yes.
Is there any other nominations?
I'll nominate Jeff Penscover. He said he wanted to be on it last time.
Patrick Delaney nominates Jeff Penscover, and Jeff Penscover accepts the nomination. Any other nominations? Patrick, did you wish to speak? Okay. Alright. We don't have a tie. Alright. We could. At this time, I'm closing nominations. Alright, we will use the voting board for our voting, casting our votes. For Dean Veneman, please vote aye, and for Jeff Penscover, please vote nay. Ayes have it. Five to three. Yep. So Dean Veneman is on the board of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item... Number nine, consider for confirmation Mayor Zachar's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. See Attachment Five. On Attachment Five, for the Library Board, Scott Kellogg at 511 Elm Street is reappointed to a term expiring seven-one, 2027. On Police and Fire Commission, Joanne Grode at 271 Lion Street is reappointed to a term expiring seven-one, 2029. And on Zoning Board of Appeals, Kevin Fangman at 710 Third Street South is appointed as an alternate member to replace J. Katna... Katna to a term expiring 11-1, 2025. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Kat Knau, seconded by Veneman. Go ahead and vote, please. Ayes have it, eight to zero. Item Ten, consider for adoption an ordinance revising Chapter Eight Sewer Ordinance regarding the Right-of-Way Lateral Repair Fund as recommended by the Wastewater Treatment Commission and necessitated due to the revised wastewater policy recently approved by council. See Attachment Six. Derek?
Just a little background on that. The Right-of-Way Repair Fund is on everybody's bill. It's 25 cents a month. And that goes into repairing... I shouldn't say repairing, but it goes into the construction portion of laterals that are underneath the right-of-way. So residents own their lateral all the way to our sanitary main. So when there is issues with their lateral that are underneath the right-of-way, underneath the road, they're technically responsible for those costs. A lot of those costs are getting bigger and bigger. I mean, I'm seeing like $25,000 bills from residents that are trying to get private plumbers to do that work. But this fund that we have was meant to be for basically emergency-type repairs. So, for instance, a lateral that was too deep that a normal contractor wouldn't be able to dig, the city would actually perform those tasks because they have the equipment to do so. And that fund would cover those costs for the city to do that. Over the course of a couple of years, we realized that it's kind of a victim-of-circumstance type operation where if you have a really extremely deep lateral, you're getting this coverage. But if you have just a normal excavation that a plumber could do, you're having to foot the whole bill. And talking about it with the Wastewater Commission, it was a recommendation that we start covering all of these equally. And we put in policies to make sure that we would cover these equally and have that procedure to do so. But in the past few years, we've been noticing that there's been an uptick in some of these repairs underneath the road. And it's mostly just because of the material, like orangeberg and some clay that has been put in in the 70s that are failing underneath the roads. So our fund is getting depleted. So raising that fund to 50 cents a month will help cover those costs that we help out those residents for right now.
Questions, comments? Jake?
So Derek, you said this is an emergency fund. Those with deep laterals are able to use this as access to repair their laterals. Those with ones that a plumber can do are stuck with the bill. Does this address that issue in any way?
Yeah, the policy changed, addressed all of that already. And that was taken to the Public Works Committee. So that addressed all of that stuff and made it equal across the board. The problem we're still having, though, is that there's just more repairs that need to be done just because of the timing of the infrastructure.
So, just to clarify, so if someone has, I think the common one in the city is tree roots and also the clay you mentioned. So if their lateral has that in there or is broken underneath just the right-of-way or does it go all the way up to the house?
It could go all the way up to the house, but what the city would cover and do would only be in the right-of-way. So if they wanted to replace all the way to their house on private property, they would still need that plumber to do so.
Okay, and the policy that was in the past that, I believe, even if the road got tore up, did they have to pay for that to replace that section of road?
Yeah, yeah. If it wasn't deemed an emergency, it was really rough language on it. And a lot of the discretion was just up to the wastewater superintendent to decide. So there was multiple scenarios that was like, well, why did that one get covered and not the other ones? So the procedure in place is now to, at least, they contact me first. We would send out... We... Another reason is that we have the equipment now to inspect laterals. So because of that equipment, I'm able to send our collections crew out, inspect the lateral from the main to the private property and determine the condition. This way, we know exactly what needs to be done. Sometimes, in a case, we know that it's just plugged, and all they need to do is hire a plumber or a router to clean it out, and there's not actually infrastructure damage. But in a case where it is like a collapsed pipe where it has to be fixed, that would be something that would qualify for this. And it would only be in the right-of-way what we would cover. So I do have that policy.
Okay.
And it just covers like the blacktop, the sidewalk, things like that, that our normal resident, if you didn't have a road there, wouldn't be paying for that stuff.
Okay, yeah, thank you for clarifying. I know that this problem exists in different parts of the cities, and people are putting chemicals down there to kill trees. I'm not an expert on wastewater, but it doesn't sound like it could be good for the entire system. So it's good to hear we're taking an additional step to try to write that and keep our system working properly.
Yep, and again, this fund is really not to make money at all. It's just to cover our costs to help the residents. We just don't want to be losing a lot of money doing these repairs, because it does take a lot of time, too. I have to coordinate with Paul Volart and his crew during the construction season. That's busy already. So it's a group effort, and we're just trying to kind of make it even across the board for our residents and not lose money in the process.
Patrick?
How much is currently in the fund?
That's a good question. So one of the things that has gotten cleared up with that fund as well is that was... The money was actually just going into the construction fund for sanitary sewer. So it wasn't actually being tracked. Since then, Tim Disorci has helped get that its own job number, so we can actually track the cost for that. The money that's in there right now equivalents to about $25,000 a year. So just based off of that and the costs that we can assume for lateral repairs is well over that $25,000 right now. So we do about, in the last couple of years, we've done about eight repairs a year.
And how much did that come out to?
That's another thing. Without that job number, it was kind of hard to track. But I was assuming it was, depending on, we did some different things for each one, but I was averaging about $8,000 to $10,000 per repair. So even, honestly, even the 50 cents might even be low, but again, this is something where we don't want to... We don't want to be growing a huge fund for. So it might be something we'll evaluate every year or so.
So the city's collecting money but not keeping track of where it's going is basically what you're saying, is that... Am I paraphrasing that correctly?
Yeah, I guess in a way, it's going into that sanitary construction fund, but could be tracked better.
So the $25,000, you are looking to get it to $50,000 by this rate? You're going to double that rate?
Yep.
That's all I have, thanks.
Any other questions? Comments? What are your wishes?
Like...
I have a motion by Austin, seconded by Kat Knau.
To approve.
To approve. Yeah. Motion by Austin, seconded by Kat Knau to approve the motion, the ordinance? Go ahead and cast your vote. Seven ayes to one nay. Motion passes. Item Eleven, consider for adoption the actions of the Planning Commission at its meeting held on May 6, 2024. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on May 6. A quorum of members was present, along with city staff and others in attendance and available on the sign-in sheet. Item one was the approval of the report from April 1 of the Plan Commission meeting. There was a motion by Daven to approve the report, seconded by Tao. That motion carried six-zero. Item two was a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, which included a public hearing in action on a conditional use permit amendment to perform recreational site improvements at Wisconsin Rapids Area Middle School, parcel identified. Staff provided a summary of the requests and recommended approval, including the conditions outlined in the staff report. The public hearing opened at 4:05 PM. Speaking in favor included Ed Allison, Building and Grounds Director from WRPS. Speaking against, none. There were some questions and conversation amongst the group. Public hearing closed at 4:09 PM. There was a motion by Daven to approve the conditional use permit request with the recommended conditions in the staff report, and a second by Godrow. That motion carried six-zero. Item three was a similar request by the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District for a public hearing in action to... For another conditional use permit amendment to perform recreational site improvements at Meade Elementary School, address and parcel is identified. Staff again provided a summary of the request recommending approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report. Public hearing opened at 4:12 PM. Speaking in favor, Ed Allison and Joseph Myron, as well as Gino Carlson. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:17 PM. There was a motion by Tao to approve that conditional use permit, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report, a second by Maruets. That motion carried six-zero. Item four was a request by the Wisconsin Rapids Public School District for a public hearing in action on another conditional use permit amendment to perform recreational site improvements at Pitch Early Learning Center, parcel identified. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval, including the conditions outlined in the staff report. Public hearing opened at 4:19 PM. Again, speaking in favor were Ed Allison from WRPS. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:20 PM. There was a motion by Godrow to approve the conditional use permit amendment, along with the staff recommended conditions outlined in the staff report, seconded by Palmquist. That motion carried six-zero. Item five was a request from Greg C. Hep and Lori Hep for a special exception to allow an accessory building in front of a principal building in the mixed residential R2 district at 511 South 14th Street. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a motion by Daven to approve that special exception, including the conditions outlined in the staff report, seconded by Maruets. That motion carried six-zero. Item six was a request from Niemann Service, which included a public hearing in action for a conditional use permit to construct a building addition for a towing business at 2141 West Grand Avenue, 2111 West Grand Avenue, and an unaddressed parcel at... On 21st Avenue South. Staff provided a handout to the commissioners, which were additional applicant items that were not included in the packet, which included parking, landscaping, and building elevations, as well as a site plan. Approval was recommended by staff with conditions outlined in the staff report. There was a public hearing at 4:34 PM. Speaking in favor, none. However, Amber Ni... Amber Niemann, the applicant, did provide comment and answer questions. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:36 PM. There was a motion by Palmquist to approve the conditional use permit, subject to only a few of the conditions. So the minutes at this point need to be corrected. Thank you, Medellin, for bringing that to my attention. So the correction is as follows. Initially, there were 11, 11 conditions included in the staff report, but with the handouts provided, many of those conditions were met, and so those conditions were removed on the ordinance. So the only conditions that would apply in this case or that were recommended for approval were Condition Three, which is this approval includes a reduced parking ratio under Section Original Condition Number Seven, that overhead doors are permitted to face 21st Avenue South. Original Condition Number Nine, applicable building and stormwater permits, state and local shall be obtained. And Original Condition Number Ten, that minor modifications to the plan shall be permitted to be reviewed and approved by the Community Development Department. So we will go ahead and correct those minutes if council approves. There was a second by Daven. That motion carried six-zero. Item seven was a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids, a public hearing in action to amend Chapter 11 zoning ordinance, specifically Appendix C, zoning district, and dimensional standards to adjust the R3 district standards for single-family uses. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was a public hearing that occurred at 4:42 PM. Speaking in favor included Katie Bailey at 411 Sixth Street South. Speaking against, none. That public hearing closed at 4:44 PM. There was a motion by Daven to approve that zoning amendment, seconded by Palmquist. That motion carried six-zero. Item Eight was adjournment. There was a motion by Tao to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Maruets. That motion carried six-zero, and the meeting adjourned at 4:45 PM. With that, I respectfully ask for your approval. Thank you.
What are your wishes? I have a motion by Palmquist. To approve. I have a second by Penscover. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote, please. Seeing none, go ahead and cast your vote, please. Seven As to one Nay, motion passes. Item 12, consider for adoption the actions of the standing committees of the common council as fol- follows. Item A, Finance and Property Committee meeting held on May 7, 2024. Mr. Katna?
Thank you. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, May 7, 2024, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Alder Person Veneman attended via video conference. Item 1, called the order, I called the meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Item 2, consider requests from Evolution Throwing Company LLC, Monica Anderson, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license for the premises located at 331 12th Avenue South. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman, to approve a request from Evolution Throwing Company LLC, Monica Anderson, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license for the premise located at 331 12th Avenue South, motion carried 3-0. Consider requests from Out of the Box Coffee House Incorporated, Teresa Cashman, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 3820 A Street South. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve a request from Out of the Box Coffee House Incorporated, Teresa Cashman, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and a retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 3820 A Street South, motion carried 3-0. Item 4, consider requests from Hokkaido Japanese Restaurant LLC, DBA Hokkaido Japanese Restaurant Sushi and Grill, Chia Liu Wong, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverages license and a retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premise located at 3310 A Street South. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman, to approve a request from Hokkaido Japanese Restaurant LLC, DBA Hokkaido Japanese Restaurant Sushi and Grill, Chia Liu Wong, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and a retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 3310 A Street South, motion carried 3-0. Item 5, consider requests from Portezzi Fine Foods LLC, Tony M. Portezzi, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and a retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 4110 A Street South. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Katna, to approve a request from Portezzi Fine Foods LLC, Tony M. Portezzi, agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverage license and a retail Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premise located at 4110 A Street South, motion carried 3-0. Item 6, consider requests from Wisconsin Rapids Ranger Baseball Incorporated, Quentin Ellis, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malt beverage license from May to October 2024, for the premise located at the Rapids Area Sports Complex, 1801 16th Stra- 16th Street South. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve a request from Wisconsin Rapids Ranger Baseball Incorporated, Quentin Ellis, agent for six-month Class B fermented malt beverage license from May to October 2024, for the premise located at the Rapids Area Sports Complex, 1801 16th Str- Street South, motion carried 3-0. Item 7, consider a request from the Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball Association, Jamie McDonald, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malt beverage license from May to October 2024, for the premise located at Meade Field, 311 17th Avenue South, for the men's co-ed women's concession stand for the seasonal softball diamond area and premises extension to include the men's concession stand and softball diamond area. It was moved by Delaney, seconded by Katna, to approve a request from Wisconsin Rapids Women's Softball Association, Jamie McDonald, agent for a six-month retail Class B fermented malt beverage license from May to October 2024, for the premises located at Meade Field, 311 17th Avenue South, for the men's co-ed women's concession stand for seasonal softball diamond area and premises extension to include the men's concession stand and softball diamond area, motion carried 3-0. Item 8, initial review of alcohol license renewals. Alcohol license renewals were reviewed. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman, to direct the city clerk to send notices of intent to not renew alcohol license if an applicant does not qualify for renewal, motion carried 3-0. Item 9, consider referral from Chief Austin's to approve the use of funds from the sale of used equipment to purchase additional equipment. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Delaney, to approve the use of the police department funds from the sale of used equipment in the amount not to exceed $16,475.27 to purchase firearms, rifles, and other equipment as outlined in the attached memo, motion carried 3-0. Item 10, auto the bills, it was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman, to approve check numbers 21185 to 21647, motion carried 2-0 with Delaney abstaining. Item 11, set the next meeting date. The next regular meeting of the Finance and Property Committee is scheduled for Tuesday, June 4, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Item 12, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under section 19.85, pair 1, pair E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It's moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman, to go into closed session. Roll call vote was taken, all members voted in the affirmative, motion carried 3-0, and the committee went into closed session. In closed session, the committee will review the status of the negotiations for the real estate purchases prescribed by the Lincoln Street Transportation Project plat 2022-14 and consider the next steps in negotiating process and procedures under Wisconsin statute 32.05. In closed session, the committee reviewed the status of the negotiations for the real estate purchase prescribed by the Lincoln Street Transportation Project plat 22, 2022-14 and considered next steps in negotiating process and procedures under Wisconsin statute Item 13, the committee will return to open session, it was moved by Veneman, seconded by Delaney, to return to open session, motion carried 3-0, and the meeting would return to open session. Item 14, the committee may discuss and take action regarding the real estate purchases prescribed by the Lincoln Street Transportation Project plat 22, 2022-14, and may consider an amended project plat for the project. It was moved by Katna, seconded by Veneman, to amend the Lincoln Street Transportation Project plat 2022-14 to remove parcel 1, motion carried 2-1, with Delaney voting in the negative. Item 15 was adjournment, it was moved by Delaney, seconded by Veneman, to adjourn, motion carried 3-0, and the meeting adjourned at 6:07 PM. And with that, I submit these minutes for approval.
I have, I have a motion by Katna to approve these minutes.
I'd, I'd like to hold out number 9.
So we're holding out item 9? Anything else? What are your wishes? I got a, sorry, I got a motion by Katna, I got a second by Palmquist, holding out item 9. Seeing no, nothing else, we'll vote on the... One second.
You'll note that the, uh, there's the vacation order and the Transportation Project plat, amendment number 1 is in your packet, that wasn't at the public works meeting, uh, but just wanna note that you're approving specifically those two documents that are in your packet.
Alright. Go ahead and cast your votes, please, for the balance of the...
Pardon? Oh, sorry.
Alright, we have seven As to one Nay, motion passes. Dean?
Yes, um, I'm, I'm, item 9, um, this was the sale of existing firearms after they, they were replaced with the new blocks and, um, uh, I, my feeling is, is while I think, um, at some point, we may be able to put that money towards the police department, I just think that money should go back into the budget, and then we should have to vote on that money. I don't think that wasn't, they sold existing and put it back into the police budget when they were replaced with brand-new guns, and I think that money is budget money, so I, I think it's the entire city, we should have to vote on whether that goes back to the police department or not. Not necessarily opposed to it going back to the police department, but there are other departments that may get that money, so my feeling is that, that money should go back into the budget.
Any other discussion, questions, concerns? What are your wishes for item 9?
Motion to approve item 9.
I have a motion by Austin to approve. I got a second by Palmquist. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, go ahead and cast...
So that's for them, for the police department to continue, to get that money, right? Is that what your motion is? Okay, just one, yeah.
Go ahead and cast your ballots. Six As to two Nays, motion passes. Item B, Public Works Committee meeting held on May 9, 2024. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mayor Zacher. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, May 9, in the council chambers here at City Hall, all members were present. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item 2, we reviewed the Engineering and Street Department monthly activity report. Uh, item 3, request from Jake Katna on behalf of Bob and Marlene Holtz at 740 Oak Street to consider adjusting parking and signage on Oak Street directly next to their home. Motion by Penskofer, seconded by Palmquist, to approve removing the no-parking restrictions on Oak Street on the south side between 7th Street South and A Street South, motion carried. Item 4, review the, review and discuss the establishment of railroad quiet zones. The requirements for establishing quiet zones were reviewed, and it was updated or requested to update numbers for all the crossings in the city and bring back to the committee in June. Item 5, review and consider approval of the Wisconsin DOT State Municipal Agreement for funding a portion of the Lincoln Street project through the Municipal Street Improvement Supplemental Program as part of the Local Road Improvement Program. This item was reviewed and no action taken because the agreement was approved during the project application process. Item 6, review the referral list, the list was reviewed, and item 9 was removed. Uh, item 7, we set the next meeting date to June 6, and item 8 was adjournment. And that concludes the report of the Public Works Committee.
What are your wishes, Patrick?
I see Mr. Holtz is here in the audience, I don't know if he has something to add to this or not, but if he would like to speak, I'd like to recognize him.
Thank you.
Please make sure the yellow light is on, on the mic, please say, state your name and address.
So, Bob Holtz, 740 Oak Street. Um, I'm not sure I heard this, uh, report correctly, that they, they voted to keep the no-parking on the south side of Oak Street? Am I understanding that correct?
No, the ordinance was removed.
I'm sorry?
The ordinance was removed.
It was removed.
Correct.
So the, uh, no-parking signs on the south side of Oak Street will be removed? Correct? Okay, that's all I needed. We have a very short driveway on, on A Street, it's only 20 feet from the front of the garage to the edge of the sidewalk. And when we have company come, or any kind of a family function, nobody has any place to park. That's why we requested that. And the street actually is a little wider there than, uh, in other areas, and if you do go two blocks to the east on Oak Street, they do park on both sides of the street by Emmanuel School. So, I appreciate that. This was passed, thank you.
Thank you. Jake?
I was just gonna ask Bob if that, thank, thank him for reaching out, and if that takes care of the issue you guys are having over there? Okay, thank you.
Anyway, uh, Dennis?
Uh, thank you. Uh, the only concern I have here, if, if you're gonna get company in the daytime, you're gonna have teachers parking in that area. So I could see maybe a time limit or something, but if you, in the evening, you probably would be alright, but what, what about, do you get much traffic or, or company in the daytime?
During the holidays, yes.
See, while, while school is there, I mean, these, these teachers will park there. I mean, I know that was some of the requests, not just from you, but... You won't have to walk so far then. Okay, thank you.
Jake?
I spoke with Marlene, and she expressed that she would, one of the reasons she wanted the parking available was for teachers. I can't speak for you, Bob, but that was part of why they would like to see the parking removed, 'cause there's a shortage of parking over there for the teachers.
What are your wishes, council?
Motion to approve.
I had a motion by Katna to approve. Got a second by Penskofer. Patrick?
Can we hold out 3?
Holding out 3. Any other questions, concerns? I got a motion by Katna, seconded by Penskofer, to approve the motion, holding out item 3. Go ahead and cast your votes. Oh, hold on.
I can, I vote aye.
Go ahead and cast your votes, please.
Yes, please, thank you.
Six As to two Nays, motion passes. Patrick?
I just wanted to vote no on everything else and vote yes on the one, so...
Motion to approve item 3 on the Public Works Committee.
I'll second.
Yep, motion by Katna, second by Ryan to pass item 3. Go ahead and cast your...
Aye.
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 No.
Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Hi.
Motion carries 7 to 1, thank you. Item C, Human Resources Committee meeting held on May 13, 2024. Mr. Delaney?
The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee meeting met on May 13 at 4:02 PM. four oh two P M. In the council chambers at City Hall. Alderperson's Delaney, Pollack, and Catna were present. Also present were Mayor Zacher, City Attorney Sue Schill, Finance Director Tim Disorcy, Recreation Supervisor Don Disorcy, Human Resources Manager Ryan Hartman, and Jennifer Cordy from M Three. Item one was called to order. Meeting was called to order, discussed. Now, item two was discussed and considered for approval, the proposed rates for seasonal recreational department wages for the two thousand twenty-four season. Motion by Catna, second by Pollack, to approve the proposed rates for the seasonal recreation department per the revised parking recreation wage rate schedule. Motion carried three to zero. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval the proposed pay rate for limited-term employees in the street department. Motion by Catna, seconded by Pollack, to set the pay rate for the L T E employees at the street department at the same rate as step one of the common labor rate, which is a grade eight, on the salary schedule. The rate would not be placed on the salary schedule, but there will be no step increases. This is an L T E rate set outside of the schedule. Current rate is twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents, proposed rate is twenty-two dollars and thirty-nine cents. Motion carried three to zero. Discuss and consider for approval the proposed pay category for the seasonal engineer technician position. Motion by Catna, seconded by Pollack, to set the pay rate for the seasonal, seasonal engineer, engineering technician at seventy-five percent of the step six of the engineering technician rate on the salary schedule. The rate would not be placed on the salary schedule, and there will be no step increases. This is a seasonal rate set outside of the schedule. Current rate is twenty-two, twenty-three dollars and six cents, proposed rate is twenty-three dollars and fifty-two cents. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, discuss and consider for approval the proposed wage rate for the seasonal summer employee at the airport. Motion by Pollack, seconded by Catna, to approve the proposed wage increase for the seasonal summer employee at the airport from ten dollars and fifty cents per hour to fourteen dollars and fifty cents per hour. Motion failed, two to one, with Delaney and Catna voting in the negative. The committee, item number six, the committee, committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, par one, par E, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Catna, to move to closed session pursuant to the above statute. Roll call was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. Motion carried three to zero. In closed session, the committee discussed nego, negotiation strategy and options regarding the renewal of group health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan and the renewal of dental plan administration with Delta Dental. No action was taken. The meeting was adjourned in closed session at five twenty-three P M. And I, with that, I'll make a motion to approve these minutes.
I have a motion by Delaney to approve.
I'd like to hold out item five. The discussion of the airport wages.
Yep, Palm, Palmquist holds out item five. Do I have a second with the remainder? Are any other questions or comments? Anything else held out?
I'll second the remainder.
I have a-
Can I?
I have a motion by Delaney and a second by Palmquist with Delaney's approval to pass the remainder of the ballot, of the minutes. Any other questions, concerns? Seeing none, move to vote. I'm gonna go ahead and read out. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Penskofer? Mr. Catna? Mr. Pollack? Mr. Delaney?
No.
Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Got everyone? Motion, motion passes, seven to one. Ms. Palmquist?
So, I asked to hold out this item because the, the information in the packet shows that the summer airport help is in his third year of assisting the city in service to the city at ten dollars and fifty cents an hour. That's assuming that there's no wage adjustment for inflation, longevity, or any kind of merit or performance increase. And as an organization taking a stance for, basing wages on low pay, low services strategy only ensures that we rotate our seasonal help, and we have more expense in training those people as they come in. And then we have no way to retain them with wages. So then, there was a comment made at the meeting that the primary reason for this increase was assessment of other city employee positions, and this isn't a negative. It is absolutely how we should be basing hourly rates, is a human resources concept and compensation management practice, where we need to make sure that our employees that are within the same job category have the same pay band. So with the hourly rate of the seasonal employee being incredibly low, and then to keep this position equitable within others in that same job family, I would, and considering that it's covered by the airport budget, make a motion to improve that fourteen fifty an hour.
I have a motion by Palmquist to pass item five at fourteen fifty an hour.
I'll second.
I have a second by Austin. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mayor. I believe this position really was for a full-time position, not a summer help. And I agree with the fourteen fifty an hour. I think every one of us here, you've got something in the paper from the, from the airport, and it did explain basically some of the duties this person would have to do. And I fully recommend the voting aye for this. And it still is pretty cheap. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
So, you said it's a, it's a full-time position, not seasonal summer, or did I misunderstand?
The request in the packet was for the increase for the seasonal summer help position from ten fifty to fourteen fifty.
But what did Dennis just say about, he said it was a full, it's not seasonal, or is?
Well, at the meeting, they basically wanted a full-time position. I don't know if something was changed outside of the meeting, but that was what the committee was talking about.
Ryan?
To Dean's question, it is a seasonal position. They were looking to, it would increase the hours by five hundred and thirty hours at the proposed pay rate, which, according to Jeremy Sickler, the airport manager, it still would have met under the threshold of the minimum amount of hours. So they may have worked full-time during the week during the seasonal times of April through October, for example, but it would not be a full-time position. That was something different that was approved, uh, I think in the March or April, uh, council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, still have a motion by Palmquist and a second by Ryan. Austin, um, any other questions or comments, concerns? Seeing none, move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Penskofer? Mr. Catna? Mr. Pollack?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
No.
Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
I have seven ayes and one no. Motion passes. Human resource, uh, item D, Human Resource Committee meeting held on May twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Delaney?
The Wisconsin Rapids Human Resources Committee met sorry, at five sixteen P M. Item number two is, committee may vote to go into closed session under section nineteen point eight five, par one, par E, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney, to move to closed session pursuant of the above, of the above statute. Roll call was taken. All members voted in the affirmative. In closed session, committee discussed negotiations, strategy, and options regarding the renewal of group health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan and the renewal of dental plan administration with Delta Dental. Item three, the committee did return into open session. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Catna, to return to open session. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval the renewal of employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Catna, seconded by Pollack, to approve the renewal of employee health insurance with Aspiris Health Plan effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, as contained in option three for eighteen months. Motion carried three to zero. Discuss and consider for approval the renewal of dental plan administration with Delta Dental effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Catna, seconded by Pollack, to approve the renewal of dental plan administration with Delta Dental effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, for eighteen months. Motion carried three to zero. Item number six, discuss and consider for approval employee health and dental insurance rates effective July first, two thousand twenty-four. Motion by Catna, seconded by Pollack, to approve the employee health and dental insurance rates as presented, effective July first, two thousand twenty-four, specifically option three of the health insurance proposals and dental rates increasing by seven percent. Motion carried three to zero. Item seven, it was adjournment. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Catna, to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at five fifty-five P M. Motion carried three to zero.
What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I got a motion by Venement to approve. I got a second by Penskofer. Questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, I move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Penskofer? Mr. Catna? Mr. Pollack? Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, motion passes. Item E, Legislative Committee meeting held on May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Mr. Catna?
The Legislative Committee met at five P M. on Thursday, May sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of the Legislative Committee were present. Item number one, call to order. I called the meeting to order at five P M. Item two, discuss fireworks permitting and enforcement referral from Alderperson Delaney based upon a letter from a resident. Discussion and no ta, action taken. Item three, discuss the placement of a city representative on the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors per the city's agreement with the Heart of Wisconsin. Motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney, to have the city representative on the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors be an Alderperson who is appointed by the common council and who shall serve for their term in office. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, discuss and consider revisions to Chapter eighteen fire code, held over from previous meeting. Motion by Delaney, seconded by Austin, to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter eighteen fire code as presented with the following revisions. Eighteen dot oh four, par one, the fire chief of fire marshal or any designated officer of the city of Wisconsin Rapids who presents credentials may inspect any property as allowed by statute for the purpose of ascertaining compliance with the provisions of this ordinance. Addition of underlined language. Eighteen dot two eight, par one, each applicant for new or renewal liquor license shall have their licensed premises inspected by the fire department before a license may be issued. See also section twenty-two dot zero eight, par one. Additional underlined language. Section eighteen dot eleven, par nine, outdoor wood fired furnaces. Proposed language for this section to be provided by city staff for council review. Motion carried three to zero. Item five, discuss and consider revisions to Chapter twenty-seven parking referral from Alderperson Delaney after consideration at the Public Works Committee slash council. Motion by Catna, seconded by Austin, to direct the city attorney to revise the proposed ordinance to remove the provisions prohibiting overnight parking and to add provisions prohibiting parking in excess of forty-eight hours with violations being based upon complaints or nuisance. Motion carried two one, with Delaney voting in the negative. Item six, discuss and consider the police department's automated license plate reader policy referral from Alderperson Catna. Motion by Austin, seconded by Catna, to approve the police department's automated license plate reader policy as presented. Motion carried two one, with Delaney voting in the negative. Item seven, review of committees, commissions, and boards. Referral from Alderperson Delaney to review for elimination or make advisory to the council. Motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney, to direct the city attorney to draft ordinances, changes which would make all committees, commissions, and boards that do not have a statutory independent authority be made advisory to the council, so that their actions would only be recommendations that would need to be considered and confirmed by the council. I don't know if that was my exact motion, but it carried two one, with Austin voting in the negative. Item eight, adjourn. Motion by Austin, seconded by Delaney, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero, and the meeting adjourned at seven thirty-four P M. I submit this for approval. Uh, holding out items four and six, so motion to approve, holding out four and six.
Got a motion by Catna to approve, holding out items four and six. Any other items which should be held out, questions or comments? Need a second?
Hold out number seven as well?
Holding out item four, six, and seven? Looking for a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Palmquist. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Penskofer? Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Mr. Pollack? Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Ms. Palmquist?
Aye.
Eight to zero, motion passes. Item four. Mr. Catna?
Yeah, held this one out. I believe Todd had some things that were discussed in the Legislative Committee that he was gonna bring more information on, and also thought it would be pertinent to have the discussion with the whole council.
I think you should have something in your packet of, of rework of that. The information from that was gotten out of the D N R, who, if you, if you would look into their standard, we've lightened it up quite a bit from what they recommend. Their recommendation for the outdoor fired wood burner shall be placed, located at least, I've got two hundred feet in there, it was like three hundred or five hundred to choose from. So we reduced that back, being that it's in the city, and the chances are very slim of, of a three hundred or five hundred ever working. And then their recommendation was a minimum on, on par C, was a minimum five hundred, and they recommend even greater. So we, we went with their minimum recommendation for it. So that rework is, you should have in your packet, and that would be what we would suggest be for, placed into the Chapter eighteen for outdoor burners.
Palmquist?
Um, I asked for this to be added back into the ordinance, and I don't think that these restrictions are outrageous. I think that it's very doable, especially as somebody who would put in an outdoor wood furnace. I do appreciate that while extending above the residence, item C is a, is a little bit much. I do appreciate that there's the option to have the fire chief approve a lesser height. So I don't think that anybody who may currently have a outdoor wood furnace that needs to obtain their annual permit would have a problem meeting this, or anybody like myself looking to put one in. I think this should be added.
I think that's why, that's why we added the, up, up to the fire chief's decision on that, in case they would present to us that- would present to us that extended chimney would not work with it. Obviously, we'd still look at how close that is to places like an assisted living, a three or four-story assisted living, or CBRF or something like that. But as always, we try to work our best with the citizens, so.
So we need to take a vote on four?
Motion to approve item four of the legislative committee agenda.
I got a motion by Catna.
I'll second.
I got a second by Venement. We're reading it over.
Right, to add the proposed language on the wood-fired furnace. I think we need to make that clear, because that wasn't addressed yet.
That makes sense. I'll amend my motion to approve item four. Consider revisions to Chapter eighteen fire code with the alternative ordinance provision, reallow allowance of outdoor wood-fired furnaces.
Can you say that again?
I'd love to.
Alternative what now?
It reads, alternative ordinance provisions, re, R.E., allowance of outdoor wood-fired furnaces. And it's on a copy, and the city attorney gave me.
And I'll still second.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion by Catna, seconded by Venement.
I think no one. I didn't realize there was a second.
Are there any objections to the alteration in the motion? Seeing none. I have a motion on the tables by Catna, seconded by Venement. Seeing no other discussion, we're gonna move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Penskovert?
Mr. Catna?
Mr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
No.
Ms. Pomquist?
Aye.
Seven ayes and one nay. Motion passes. Item six, Mr. Catna?
Item six is regarding the police department's automated license plate reader. It is the flock cameras that have been discussed. We had a lengthy discussion about it at the legislative committee. Ultimately, it was decided to adopt the policy that was presented before us with a two-one vote, Mr. Delaney voting in the negative. I feel it's necessary to pull this out so that the whole council can speak their opinion on this. Again, not gonna review the whole lengthy discussion, but if you saw it, if you're aware of it, these cameras are, they use artificial intelligence software to analyze vehicles, and they go into a network of systems that allows the police department to find vehicles based on their license plates or other characteristics of the vehicle, such as if it has damages, to locate criminals and enter them into a network or catch them as they roll into town. So it seems to be a controversial topic. My thought on it is that it's a good thing to be able to implement this. However, if it turns into some type of government oversight or if there's abuse in it, we can always take them down. I was pretty torn on this, but in the end, that's what made me vote in the affirmative, is that we can put them up, and in the event anything happens, we can take them back down. It should be noted that it's not just the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department that have access to these cameras. It also is any higher law enforcement department or agency. So we're basically opening it up to that on what your opinions are. But there's a policy I recommend, if you haven't, reading through it. I feel this policy, out of the ones I've reviewed, is the best for the community. It works more on, if you read about it online, basically a hit system, so it's not totally surveilling all the time. It more reacts to when a car that's in the system is detected. And I'm sure the police department, he can speak more on that.
Yes, thank you. Chief Austin's would love to be here, but he's gone away at training, so I am filling in his place. I'm Deputy Chief Scotty Witt. So thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter. Flock cameras, now that's something that law enforcement across the state and across the nation are really going to. It's the cutting the edge of police technology, and using this technology will only enhance our abilities to solve crimes quicker. In the event child gets abducted and there's a vehicle that's used, we can use that description to narrow down our search, to hopefully find a license plate that would give us a lead to hopefully locate that child. That's just one example. There's many examples, hit-and-run accidents that would flee an area that we have a description. A lot of times those go unsolved, and we're unable to locate those vehicles. But with this technology, we're able to do that. Stolen vehicles, another example. If your vehicle gets stolen, we can enter that in and get real-time alerts saying it left the city, it didn't leave the city, it went into a different city that also has flock cameras, and we use that network to locate vehicles in that manner to help solve crimes in a much timelier manner. This policy that was drafted, I think, hopefully covers the needs of the council. This item was previously approved in the budget to go ahead and purchase this, and we just, along with that, allowed for input on this policy. So I think Chief Austin's and the police department did a great job in drafting a policy that's clear. If anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them to my best of ability.
Palmquist?
Going back to the access for other municipalities that have the flock cameras, I believe it was said during the meeting that we need to have an agreement with them. Is that correct? Like, anybody with a flock camera can't just log into our flock cameras and see our information unless we sign off on it and they sign off to exchange information with us?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay.
So, yeah, we'd have, they'd have to create an account and have approvals.
And to ease anyone, it is not capable of facial recognition at this time. We're looking at vehicles, license plates.
Correct. It does not have any facial recognition capabilities. It does not capture personal identifiable information. It's just capturing vehicles, images, and license plates.
Thank you.
You mentioned vehicles and license plates. What about, under vehicles, would trailers be included?
Yes. Yep.
As someone who had their trailer stolen, I would find that beneficial.
Yes. Yep. So, yeah, you could enter in a description, vehicle, a trailer, and a description of the trailer, and that should also pop up in those searches.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none. What are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
A second.
I got a motion by Palmquist, seconded by Pluse. Any other final comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none. Move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Penskovert?
Aye.
Mr. Catna?
Aye.
Mr. Pollock?
Aye.
Mr. Delaney?
No.
Hi.
Palmquist?
Seven to one. Ayes have it. Motion passes.
Item seven, Mr. Pluse?
I asked for number seven to be held out, review of committees, commissions, and boards. Referral from Alderperson Delaney to review the elimination and make it advisory to the council. As someone who has served on the Historic Preservation Commission, my only concern is that it may result in maybe a lack of interest from citizens to serve on these commissions and put a lot of time and effort. A lot of the citizens that serve on the commissions have a lot of expertise and knowledge, and I feel that if it was only advisory, that interest may not be as what it is currently. So I'm not aware of it being an issue. I understand that the city, council still has to vote on any monetary or budget issues regarding any of those commissions, so that was my opinion on that.
Thank you. Any other? Mr. Venement?
Could, we discussed the, or sue, I guess I'll ask, the elimination or make advisory. So that's two different things.
Yeah, it's my understanding that this is gonna be referred back to legislative after I'm supposed to go through and come up with some language regarding, and then you can look at each committee and decide what you want to do with it. I mean, I don't think there was any intent to take any action today. I would have to look at all of them and draft ordinances and then, or get further direction from you on what exactly you want to do. Because the legislative committee did not go through each one and kind of decide what they wanted to do. It was, there was just a blanket motion, I guess, to make them all advisory, but it's my understanding that it would go back to legislative, and then each committee or commission or board would be discussed and to determine what to do with it. And I don't know if that's your, Alderperson Catna?
Mr. Catna?
Yeah, so the item on the agenda, that's how that reads. But if you, the motion was to direct the city attorney to draft ordinance changes which would make all committees, commissions, and boards that do not have statutory independent authority to be made advisory to council. So we don't have any elimination in there. The only, the way I picture this going is, the only reason elimination would be needed, there's several committees out there that I haven't met in years. So those could be looked at, and they're on the books, and, you know, maybe we don't need them. The rest of the committees, commissions, and boards, I think there's all really good people on there. I appreciate the work they do. For the most part, I don't have a problem with anything that they move forward with. What I do have an issue with is that when this was designed, and maybe this was done individually, is that these commissions, committees, and boards were taken away from the elected officials, which essentially takes them away from the people who vote us in to get to run the city. And these, some of these could be treated as departments. Others are there for community input. But at the end of the day, they operate autonomously. And the mayor or the council, we can't change anything they do in those meetings. Even if they were to make an irrational decision that most residents were against, and they called us, we wouldn't be able to take any action on it. So what I see really coming out of this is not, maybe not even individual ordinances dictating what each commission does, but maybe one that oversees all of it, that just gives council the ability that if we need to step in on a decision that was made, we have the ability to do that, which we do not right now. And that's a huge concern to me. I mean, if you scroll to item thirteen on tonight's agenda, you will see a number of these listed, that for years we have no choice to pull these out, talk about them. Your only option is to vote to file them on the clerk's office. And there's a reason that the state mandates some of them, if they're gonna be put together, they're required under statute, and some of them aren't. And this decision was made by previous councils to make these completely independent. And when you get residents call you as their alderman and have an issue or question about certain areas of it, and you're their elected official, and you have no say in what goes on, and something that they as taxpayers own, and they should have a say in, and these operate independently and autonomously away from us, and they're, you know, some of it is tax money being spent, some of it, it's just that people would like to have a voice in what they see, and that's not necessarily how it's currently structured. And so really, this would just give the authority for the council to pull some of this out sometimes and take a look at it so that we can run the city as a whole, we can finance the city as a whole, we can operate departments as a whole. I mean, we got some rules for some departments. We even give raises to the entire city, and then there's the ability to give separate raises elsewhere. And really, it's just gotten out of control, and this governing body doesn't have its hand on running the parts of the city. And it's disappointing, but I think this is an opportunity to just make one small tweak. I don't see us going in and picking apart all these committees and commissions' agendas. I think it's just to put that in place, so in the event, we do need to step into something, we can do so. And tonight, we're looking at, you know, brainstorming ideas on what would we want that to look like.
Ms. Palmquist?
So I saw this more, I feel like the word advisory to council is looked at negatively from those existing commissions and boards. And the way that I saw it was more of an opportunity to have a discussion, where, like Jake said, right now, we can't even say, let's hold out item five, talk about it, and vote yes, just like the commission did. We just need more information. So it opens the door to have more experts on those boards and commissions so that we can ask those questions, and then have that full transparency and awareness from everything that we oversee. So I don't think it will, I hope that it doesn't decrease the interest that we have, and I hope that it brings in more experts on those, in those areas, so that they have the opportunity to come up and talk about that passion that they have, like historic preservation, something I'd love to hear more about and not just approve on a list.
Yeah, in regards to interest as well, that is actually part of my concern and why I feel council does need some ability to have a hand in these committees if needed. I mean, if anybody's on Facebook, you'll see that the city is sharing to try to get people to sign up for these. It's not, like, there is really good people on a lot of these boards and commissions, but it's, sometimes, we often just have to approve whoever puts their name in the hat to make a quorum on a board or commission. And that's unfortunate. Maybe, maybe in the past, there was more interest, but at this point, you know, we're advertising to get people to come forward with this. Luckily, tonight, we had a couple where there was a lot of candidates, and they were good candidates, but I've been here where that's not the case. And oftentimes, people don't even come to the meeting to speak to the board they're being appointed to. And then when residents reach out to us, we're supposed to say we appointed them, and that committee operates independently. I mean, you can't find any of these people's names on the website. These aren't who the complaints go to. These aren't the people who have to balance a budget, or hear out to taxpayers, or work to develop the future of the city. I mean, they have their input, and they're good people, but at the end of the day, we've been elected to see that vision. We've been elected to balance budgets. We've been elected to do that, and that's not capable for us in some areas right now. So I don't think it would hurt interest, because interest isn't always there on some of these.
Mr. Pluse?
So am I correct that we would later see a draft of which commissions would be advisory and which ones would be statutorily, stay the same?
The ones that are statutorily required, they're in the packet. There's a number of them. And then, so those, we, those would maintain. The others, we would take a look at developing some type of ordinance that would have to come back to legislative and then come back to legislative and then back to council on how exactly we would approach this, and that's what the city attorney would put together.
Any other questions? Concerns, comments? What are your wishes? Mr. Venement?
Yeah, I do agree with when Mr. Katna was talking about moving everything to the end. At the end of the meeting, we have, these commissions are filed. Basically, there's some pretty big things that go on that we really never talk about at council. And I'm not trying to extend the meeting length by adding more to our agendas, but a couple of these commissions just filed a report and that we don't discuss it. And there's been a number of times where I've held out, as being on Parks and Rec Director, I've held out, or Commissioner, I've held out Parks and Rec, but as Mr. Katna said, there's really not much we're doing about it. And these are at the end of the meet, file the report, and that doesn't really do anything, especially, there's some pretty big numbers in some of these things, dollar-wise, whether it's, in that particular case, coming from the room tax or whether it's coming from taxpayer dollars, there's still some pretty big issues or items, especially some of the things we've been doing at the zoo lately in that regard. So I don't know, I, I think there definitely needs to be some thought about at least bringing these to the meeting, whether they exist or not. Filing them at the, filing them at the end, filing them in the clerk's office is not sufficient, in my opinion. I think they should be discussed. And holding them out doesn't, holding out specific items from it doesn't really ever do anything because we don't, they're not action items at this point. I think some of these should be action items.
Anyone else? Mr. Austin?
Do we have an idea right now which committees and commissions we're even talking about?
Probably Park and Rec, wastewater commission, waterworks and lighting commission. I don't know about the historical preservation, if that's needed by a certain grants or, or something. Planning, that's, that's pretty much needed. I, I mean, I guess, that was something I was going to talk to Kyle about. But the ones that you can't really change are library board, housing authority, Board of zoning appeals, Board of Review. I think that pretty much covers them all. I mean, we, we worked for about a year on Park and Rec. I don't, maybe, I know you, there are quite a few of you are new, so don't recall, but there was, and then the council was saying, well, we don't get to, you know, decide what happens at Park and Rec. So we spent quite a bit of time on changing that ordinance to reflect what specifically council wanted approval over and what they didn't. And so, I mean, so that, that was an instance where the council, just fairly recently, I would say in the last year and a half or two years, changed how that, how that worked in terms of what was advisory from Park and Rec and what, and what they had kind of final say on. But just as an example of one that was, kind of was looked at in detail, and then some common ground was some between the Park and Rec Commission and the council on how that committee, or how that commission would work.
So wastewater, Park and Rec, and waterworks and light?
Yeah, probably historic preservation. I'm thinking, I don't have, actually, in your packet is a list of all of the, I'm sorry, all of the commissions and boards, and I don't have that pulled up right now, but I think those are the main ones that are not statutorily mandated that you have a separate independent body.
Katna?
Industrial Development Commission.
Yeah, actually, I think the one, didn't you get the, the most recent one? I think I had taken out. Because we, I would say about a year and a half ago, we took out industrial development, ADA, hazmat. So there, there were quite a few that were taken out. And the first iteration of that commissions and boards was done, I think, four years ago. And then I did just do an updated one, and I thought that I had taken those out, industrial development, and the ones that have since been repealed or taken out. So I hope the right, I put the right one in the packet. I'm just getting up to it now. So I guess what I was thinking was going to happen is, as I said, I mean, this meeting, it was at the end of the meeting, it was already two and a half hours. We had gone through quite a, quite a bit of stuff and other ordinances that I would just come, come back to the council or come back to legislative and talk specifically about each one, because that isn't something that really was done at the, at the first legislative meeting. But whatever you wish to do with this is, just let us know.
Well, there, there will be no ordinance in front of us until we discuss it further. So I'm going to make a motion to approve directing the city attorney to draft an ordinance change to make all committees, commissions, and boards that do not have a statutory independent authority to be advisory to council. With that motion, that doesn't do it tonight. Each ordinance or a ordinance would have to come back and then get approved. But this motion allows for further discussion and to look into this further. So again, the motion is, you got it, Jennifer? Okay.
I'll second that.
I got a motion by Katna, seconded by Venement. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none?
Just one thing, if you didn't get a chance to watch a legislative meeting or you weren't in attendance, I highly recommend you do so. There was some discussion related to waterworks and light in particular. There was some great information shared. I think it's very important that every council member understands their side of this as well. Thank you.
Mr. Delaney?
I find it interesting that waterworks and lighting did show up, you know, kind of like, I don't know, maybe they've got something that they don't want made public or to the council. It was brought up by a resident that this authority has legally been given to the council here, and as elected officials, we've given our authority away, and we really do need to take it back. If you don't think that you're able to do this, I think that you're not up for the job or responsibility, if you're not a responsible person, if you're not a hard worker, I don't think this job is for you. So I think that your vote will indicate if this is the right position for you. That's all.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? I got a motion by Katna, seconded by Venement. Seeing none, move to vote. Mr. Austin?
Aye.
Mr. Venement?
Aye.
Mr. Pluse?
Aye.
Mr. Panskovert?
Nay.
Mr. Katna? Mr. Pollak? Mr. Delaney?
Yes.
Hi.
Mrs. Palmquist? Seven to one. We're good. Item thirteen. Seven ayes, one nay. Motion passes. Thank you. Item thirteen, reports. Reports of other committees, commission, boards, and department reports will be placed on file. No action necessary. Item fourteen, referrals to committees.
We have, goodbye. I have received three referrals, all to the legislative committee. One from Alderperson Palmquist regarding revisions to chapter two of the municipal code. One from Alderperson Delaney reviewing the need for various commissions and committees. And another one from Alderperson, it's the same one, yeah. And another one from Alderperson Delaney, also in regard to commissions and committees where there should be advisory to the council. We just discussed those, but those were the three I got in.
So that last item that we discussed, that actually was two different referrals. And so I think that may have added to the confusion as it was put in as one line item. But yet they're two separate, totally different things.
Thank you. Item fifteen, in open session, the council may vote to go into closed session under section 19.851E of the Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. In section 19.851G, Wisconsin statutes, which reads, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. In closed session, the council will discuss negotiations and litigation strategy regarding litigation involving a new wastewater services agreement with the village of Beeren. What are your wishes?
Move to go into closed session?
Can we have a five-minute break? After we vote?
After we go into closed session? I have a motion by Venement to go into closed session.
I'll second.
I got a second by Delaney. All those in. Austin?
Aye.
Venement?
Aye.
Pluse?
Aye.
Panskovert?
Aye.
Katna?
Aye.
Hi.
Eight to zero. Maddie, I get stuck on your name.